...meeting on two stage July 7th will come to order. There's nothing that's continued. Everything that's on the agenda is going to be heard.
The matter that is going to be continued is 1018 Osgood Street under the bond release. Couple items were not ready to go, so that one will not be released.
Okay, so that's the only one, okay. Other than that, everything else that's on the agenda will go then, okay. So the first item here is a lot release for 160, 170, 180 Salem Street. And so Christine, can you tell us, recap last time and tell us what you've done since then?
Is Mr. Cahill here?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is here. And since the last meeting, we did, in your packets, you received the communication from DPW. We had previously looked at the project and you'd seen the as-built. That was, and the letter from the engineer saying everything was installed. And DPW had reviewed the site. And they had provided an estimate at $1,000 a lot for the lot release so the two homes can be built. This is all the legal paperwork, the deed restrictions are all recorded. This is going to be a private way. The town will never have any responsibilities associated with this way. So that's where the project stands, and the applicant is here.
Was the stuff that was piled up in the back corner of the lot cleared?
Ask him that directly from the pictures. I'm trying. It's not logging in properly, so I'm working on that. Didn't want to connect. I do have hard copy plans if this doesn't go through.
Does the applicant want to come up?
While we're waiting for the plans to come up, if you could identify yourself for the record and perhaps ask, answer the question, that one question's already been asked.
Certainly. My name is Jack Cahill. My address is 79 Old Village Lane. My wife and family were, we previously were the occupants of 166 Salem Street, which we sold. There was, Judy Timman helped us with a lot release for that, 166, several years ago, so we could construct a three-car garage with a family room above it. And all of the work was accomplished, given the planning board specifications. I think it was approved back in 2008. All the work was accomplished and monitored by Christensen and Sergi Engineering and certified to the town.
Yeah, I mean, I think what was done on that lot really is not directly within the planning jurisdiction per se. I think, I'd like to get at, while we wait to get the plan to come up, the question about the material being stored on the property.
There's only stones in the back that are going to be used in construction of retaining walls. And then there's a pile alone that's going to be used when the lots are completed, before we start. That's all that's there.
Okay. The decision does call any stockpiling materials, dirt, wood, construction materials, et cetera, must be shown on the plan and reviewed and approved by the planning staff. Any approved piles, so were these approved piles?
Yes. In fact, the pile was located on, I think it would be the western corner of the lot. And one visit that was made by the previous town planner, Judy Timman, requested that it be relocated to the, I think would be the southern end of the lot. Actually, vice versa. It was in the southern, and then she requested it be relocated to the northern end of the lot and covered. And that's where it sits presently, waiting to be used.
Okay. The second part of that decision, though, calls for any approved piles must remain covered at all times and fenced off. Are they fenced off and covered?
No, they're not fenced off. There is a blue tarp, and it has been covered since it's been sitting there.
It's been sitting there how many years?
Two, two years.
That's part of the question?
Okay.
The other part of the decision called for all trees that are noted on the plan, which we would need to see the original landscaping plan, that they'll remain in perpetuity? Has that happened, or any trees been removed?
No. In fact, we've planted 89 trees on the property.
Okay.
On all three lots, 166, 170, and 180. So there's been, there's been no additional trees removed, except maybe five or six that have expired.
And have you updated your development schedule?
No.
Okay. That needs to be done. That should have been done before the lot release, actually, on the lot, according to the plan. Has the sidewalk fund been paid?
Yes.
Do you know when that was paid?
I have the copy of that.
What about the watershed special permit? We didn't get a copy of that for this meeting, so I don't know where that stands.
Would you like a copy, would you like a paper copy? Yes. There's no internet connection today, so we're going to have to use paper copies. I brought as much in my regular files as I can. That's the other piece that you were looking for.
So do you know where the watershed special permit stands?
I do not think that that's applicable. It was resolved, I believe, with the initial approval.
So you've had the bond released on this?
No, I don't think we got the bond released, no.
Now, refresh my memory, what was the watershed special permit for?
I don't know. I haven't seen any of those.
Because?
I think there was an estimate in the beginning of the project that there was 3,000, 4,000 yards of material that was going to be removed from the site, but it never did happen.
No, that was the land disturbance permit. That was waived, I saw, because you went and changed from four lots to three lots. So this is something different. John, can you look at that? I'll go through my rest of my stuff here. So sidewalk fund's been paid. Have you submitted the plan showing the reconstruction of the stone wall and fence facing Salem Street?
Yes.
Has that work been done, or just the plan submitted?
The work's been done and the plan's been submitted. There's a total as-built plan.
Well, it's an interim as-built, which means it's not the final.
I'm sorry?
It's labeled interim, which means it's not a final as-built. The Christensen plan is labeled interim, which means it's not final, because you have to give final as-bills as part of the decision.
Okay. I guess it's my understanding that the final as-bill comes after?
Right, when it's done, yeah.
Exactly.
But that's not, that's not, it's not an as-built until you finish up your whole project, then you'll have to sit and admit an as-built again.
Right.
That was just the as-built for the roadway portion of it, but not for the whole project, for the homes.
And the circumstances that took place at the time, because the entire bond was only $1,000 for this project, the town planner requested that Christensen and Sergi provide engineering and documenting supervision of the project. And that interim as-built reflects the entire project as it existed at that time. I think it was done in 2013. And it exists as the completed work, scope of work presently.
Right. But then, right now, when we do a lot release, if you look at the decision, it'll say a performance guarantee in the amount determined by the planning board and a DPW to cover the rest of the stuff. We actually, when we release lots, we up the ante. That's why we only required 1,000 at the first point, because the bond, the lots were our bond. That's our guarantee, because you can't do anything with lots.
Yes.
So that's why it was only 1,000 initially, and that's what we're discussing, trying to figure out how much it is. I mean, $1,000 from the DPW is their number, but it's not our number, to finish up the work.
Yeah, I mean, let's hold for a side. What's unclear to me is that, first of all, how far does the, has the sewer gone? Where do you have to make your sewer connections?
The sewer connections were done initially in conjunction with the DPW, Mr. Simons, and they are stubbed to each one of the lots. The sewer line and the water service has been brought all the way back into the lot in the rear, number 180, and it's also stubbed to the front lot. So there, that work is completely done and it was done.
Will there be no other work required, period, anywhere in this project in the right of way?
No, no. And this is, this has been the dilemma with, I think, DPW, that it was their position that it's really not a public works project, because it's all private.
It is private, but that's, we still, the question is, we are creating, and we may not deed it, it may not be a public way, but again, is there going to be any more activity on what is effectively the driveway or the roadway?
No.
Is it going to be opened at all? And maybe you can, and maybe Mr. Christensen, you know, just confirm this, but it's, like the sewer drops, where, at this point, where do they go to? And where, is it the sewer service? Is it, where does it end? And is there going to be any work done in the right of way at all? That's just the only question that I'm asking right now on this.
And the answer is no. The sewer is stubbed to the end of that lot, number 170 in the rear, and then it goes out almost to Salem Street. And there's a sewer manhole. When it diverts through one sewer manhole and goes to a second that's on the front of lot number 180, and then it goes out into the street. And all of that infrastructure has been done.
That's the one that's labeled lot 1A on?
Yes. So number 170 is the lot in the rear, and number 180 is the lot out front that was the former lot. And the town requested, rather than dig in the street and put the infrastructure in the way it was originally proposed, there's two sewer manholes to capture the sewer system, or the sewer piping conduit.
Now, Christine, what is, can, the letter from DPW, can you, I think, I don't normally want to read it into the record, but I'll read it. I think we need to read it in here now.
It says, "I propose we require $1,000 per lot bond to be released upon final sign-off of building permit by DPW. Planning department is to hold and release the bond upon sign-off." Again, they, they-
But what do they say? What have they done, I guess?
DPW?
Yeah, what review of the plans and what are they satisfied with?
Yes. They have received the interim as-built and the letter from Christensen and Sergi, and they went out on the site about two weeks ago, prior to the last meeting. And they confirmed that everything was done as it was stated by that engineer. And then I asked them, after your last meeting, could you post, give me advice on how much to bond per lot? And to be honest, they said they were confused by my request, because they're not assuming any of the roadway or infrastructure, so-
No, but the, here's the problem is that they're going to, yes, it's a private roadway, but if the roadway gets built, and there's problems with it and it needs to be repaved, who's going to do it?
There's deed language here that says that the property owner is in perpetuity, and the town will, it's recorded language.
Yeah, but we want to get some of that stuff resolved in advance.
It's been recorded already.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if there's, if there's, ends up being a problem, we're going to be stuck with the problem. That's why we want to be completely covered on anything. I mean, I'm amenable to having a small bond, but 1,000 doesn't cut it to cover all the potential risk. I'm more inclined to think it should be at 5,000 a piece, and then we can, as we go through it, we can release, we can release it when the work is done.
Yeah, there's still a fair amount of stuff by the decision thing to do. The private driveway and all the stormwater has to be constructed. The private driveways haven't been done. The final site cleanup, site restoration, site screenings, street trees, lot and site erosion control. There's still plenty of stuff that needs to be done on the site when they build the homes, so, and that's part of the decision, so. And as-bills cost around $2,000 to $3,000 for homes, so I think it should be at least 5,000. You know? I mean, I think a standard we've done is lots are 10,000. I mean, it's still a lot, even though-
Yeah, I think this is less than that. I mean, it is, I think it's, but I just feel that 1,000 a piece on these things leaves the town very exposed, so.
If you'll permit me, and if I can, I can offer, many of the things that you just read, you know, have been accomplished. The stormwater, the erosion.
Yeah, but the problem is, you know, it's constructed and there's going to be trucks on the property, and so, so what I, I don't know what you're thinking at this point.
Yeah, 5,000.
I think, my inclination on the, on the watershed special permit is, there's been enough work done on the property that I think we can let the thing go, but, I mean, we would have it within our rights to basically say, you know, you would have to come back for another special permit. I don't think much good is served by doing that, but, because I think you, I think you've covered it, and I think the amount of work that's done in the watershed is really relatively minimal, but that's another reason why we want to make sure that we have sufficient money to cover, you know, the cost of, you know, we have a watershed, in fact, I'm thinking maybe, you know, more than five, like, more than, given that we got a watershed special permit here.
7,500 each?
7,500, yeah. Because you have to make sure that the entire lot is in good order, not just the, not just the roadway, because it's a watershed special permit for site disturbance, so. And we can release some of that a little bit more quickly, but I think that would be a way, a fair way to, to give you the flexibility to move forward, you know, so. I don't know if you guys have any further questions or comments?
I still think we need to address the piles, though, of debris that have been out there for two years that aren't fenced off. You have to do something to mitigate the ice ore. I mean, you can't leave stuff unfenced and just sitting there for two years, and what can you do to mitigate that? You know, you do know the neighbors complained about that.
I'm aware that the neighbors complained. You know, it's, we did exactly as the building inspector requested. There were two piles. All the stone is congregated in one simple location. And again, at the request of the previous town planner, I moved all of the pile from one side of the land to the other property line and covered it in the same manner that I had when it was located on the other side of the property. And what happened is, the neighbor on that side complained. So it's simply, it's not even really, I mean, I could, I could take a tractor and grade it down, and there'd be no pile there. But it's covered over in the blue tarp, and that's what the neighbor finds offensive.
Well, I mean, I'm sort of more inclined to have you exercise your judgment about being a good neighbor. That's really sort of my view on it. I mean, it's, the neighbors were pretty upset, and I think you, as, you know, I know you don't live there anymore, but sort of as their former neighbor and as the developer of the property, I think you should take what you think are prudent and fair steps to mitigate a circumstance that, you know, they consider to be an ice ore.
Mr. Simms, I think there's much more to the story that I don't think is of the interest to the planning board regarding that particular neighbor, quite frankly. I did, I did more than a couple of thousand dollars in excavation time for that particular neighbor concerning her land to the rear that had nothing to do with any of this nor project.
Well, that's why, to some degree, I think it's better to defer, I mean, I think you should heed the thing and say, you know, is this the most appropriate way to deal with this? And in a way that, you know, mitigates any adverse impact on the neighbors. And I'm okay with leaving it to your discretion there, but, you know, I'd ask you to do something.
A blue tarp, a blue tarp.
I'm more than happy, and in fact, I tried. And let me tell you, since you're really, I think you're asking for an explanation, the explanation is this. The neighbor that you're suggesting wanted all of the pine trees taken down behind number 166. She did not want any of the pine trees abutting her property. So I, you know, again, the number of trees there is under the, you know, obviously the authorization, and I told her that I couldn't do that. I advised her that I'd be willing to come back in and seek a modified approval, but there'd be a cost of taking down the trees and then replanting the vegetation. And they would not agree to share in any of that.
Fair enough. I mean, that's not the discussion we had, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole here. I just ask you to take what is proper, fair, reasonable care. I mean, to some degree, you know, we can't push it too hard, but if we go out there and it looks like a mess, we'd probably lean on you. I mean, that's the only point. So if, you know, I'm asking you to exercise your judgment here, and to do what you can to mitigate it, and, you know, as Lynn said, putting a tarp over something for two years is not the biggest thing. But then again, if you're starting to work with me, you're going to take the tarp off, and that solves the problem.
Yes.
So.
We can move it as soon as the first foundation-
So, okay, at this point, I know we've sort of gone a little bit back and forth, but would somebody, if we suggest a bond amount of 7,500 for each of the lots, pending receipt of the proper paperwork, are people amenable to releasing the lots? You want to make a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion that, to release lots one and three upon receipt of a 7,500 performance guarantee per lot and-
And completion of the appropriate paperwork. Okay. Somebody want to make a second?
I'll second.
Dave second, and motion made in second, and all in favor? All right. Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Just a question, will I be able to work with the planner to?
Yes, by all means. I think at this point, just work with the planner, and you'll be on your way. You know, again, if it's any consolation, we treat everybody the same, so we're not picking you out. I know we were a little tough on you, but, you know, we appreciate your patience on this, and hope you, everything works out well for you.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay.
The plan? Can I have that one watershed permit back, just so I have it for the file?
This is your only copy?
It is. I took a bare bones file set with me tonight, because I was hoping to have electronics, although I think-
Can I get a copy of?
Yeah, I will send it back.
Along with the plant, the original watershed plan and the original landscaping plan?
Yes. These are the meeting materials for tonight, since we don't have-
Moving right along, the next item is Regency Place. Map 65 parcels, eight, nine, and 55. So can you give us the short story on where we are on this?
Regency Place is the, it's a planned residential community, the 464 Appleton Street that you just finished the preliminary subdivision decision on, for the seven-lot subdivision. And I, you received in your packets just the preliminary decision, a basic plot plan. They're looking to release the lots and begin construction. DPW has gone out and reviewed the work. The road is in, the utilities are set in, and they recommended a bond amount of $45,500. The Christensen and Sergi that have, you know, forwarded, you know, they accept that amount from DPW.
But, I mean, I certainly, Mr. Christensen can stand up, and, but, in all my years in the planning board, I've never seen the amount established by the developer. I've always seen it come from the DPW department, and it's based on a detailed sum of the pieces of, and we have a detailed thing, much more information than we have here.
Same way we got Tom Zerico last meeting, we had the DPW had a schedule of each item and everything like that.
I think the applicant can speak to their conversation with DPW.
Yeah, we were asked to put together an estimate of what work that we saw that was left. So there's the top course of pavement, which I listed, bounds, as-built plans, and some mowing and seeding of the swales. And that was the work that was left. The total amount is 45,000. The asphalt price was from the, the price from the plant, so it's not an estimate on our part, but a real number. So that's what we were asked to provide, and that's what we did, so.
DPW asked you to provide that?
Yes.
So why are they doing something different than they've done every other time? Who would DP, who, Jean? Is this Jean that asked for this, or?
Yes.
I think, I mean, I sent an email asking them to set a bond amount for this, and they worked with him.
Yeah, they're supposed to set the bond amount. I mean, there's no contingency?
Well, that's there, plus we'd need our funds to have those on top of that and things like that.
Well, no, there's something in there for as-bills.
That's for roadway as-bills, not the houses.
Well, we don't care for the houses.
Without stormwater and everything like that?
Well, unless, unless we permit it for that specific reason.
We did. There was stormwater on this, those lower impact developments, so all the houses had some stormwater around it.
I just need a clarification, I could ask Christine. So I'm looking at the request that was made to estimate this, and it, you know, it's the email, and I don't see DPW on it. It's just CSI Engineering.
I don't, I don't think I added DPWs into this one, because this one came back with the numbers, and he had, so I wanted to make sure you saw the one with the numbers and details.
I feel very uncomfortable moving forward on this without, you know, the normal level of documentation we have on these things. I mean, we don't have anything here that the DPW approved this. Nothing in writing, no letter, nothing.
At least I can't get out my email to grab that for you. So is there, is there a contingency number that you'd like?
I mean, there may be a complaint and everything, but it's just, as I said, I'd never seen this before. I don't, and I'm not trying to be difficult about it, but, you know, I think we have to, we have to do our due diligence and get the full approval before we release the lots.
Can I ask what kind of sign-off you would like, or do you want to condition this lot release and bond amount?
Well, they provide a schedule, and it's from the DPW. It's on their letterhead. That's how they've always done it.
I mean, I've, and it's a detailed spreadsheet that they use to calculate what they think of the bond amounts, because the bond amounts are to protect the town's interest. I mean, it's fared up back and forth with the developer to make sure it's reasonable, but, you know.
Now, in fairness to the applicant, because we do have a new planner that's, you know, I, you know, we're not going to, we can't release, you know, what, three parcels is what you were looking for this time?
Three, is it three lots?
And there's how many remaining? There's seven, there's seven total now? We modified this so many times, sorry.
You modified it, yeah.
Right.
No, I think we had six. Two more makes eight, right?
Yeah.
And just so you know, the decision that was sent out was a draft. It wasn't a final. So this is useless. This doesn't even have the vote count. This was a labeled draft decision, so.
So, but you only want three lots right now? Where actually, are you ready to get building permits, or where are you? I mean, if we waited two weeks, is this going to cause you a huge amount of problem?
It just does not scheduling right. They're ready, they have plans. They can submit building permits as soon as this is cleared up, so.
Okay.
You know, you lose two weeks in the construction season.
It's significant.
It'll get you.
I mean, what do you say, are you willing to heavily caveat it? I mean, how many lots in total?
Is there eight?
I believe there's eight.
Eight.
There were originally six, and then somebody came in for a modification to.
So this is only releasing three?
Yes.
So, so you still have the other ones?
We can add a contingency to those items, too, I mean.
I'd be willing to release the three if we add a contingency, and the applicant agrees that we can modify this per what we feel is right when the DPW is number.
Yeah, based on full.
Because typically, we can't, we don't have a right to go back and modify it.
He would agree to that, isn't he?
Yeah, or maybe what ideally we'd do is go to DPW, get them to validate these amounts at their spreadsheets. If they're okay with it, then we'll actually, you can go forward and sign it and release the lots, okay? If there's a big delta, then I think you got to come back in two weeks.
Yeah.
So if the amounts are close, and let us know how far off they are, we'll give you, you know, we'll make a decision contingent to that.
So why don't we put a 20% contingency?
Okay, that's fair.
So 54,000.
Yeah, okay.
And this is for, how many lots you're going to release?
Three.
Three.
Three they want, huh?
Which three?
Eight, nine, and 55. Is that correct?
Okay.
Kind of remember, is that down at the end, or is that where you come in off of it?
Down the end.
Okay, so it's by that.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
They only see eight on the plan.
It says A, 5A. Which ones are they?
I think that's what it said, was eight, right? Originally six, increased by two.
Yeah, I think it was six and increased by two.
Yeah, when they, when they agreed to include the spec.
I just can't see the numbers.
We can't see the numbers on the plan.
On the lot plan.
Would you like the big plan?
Lot seven, lot eight, 5A.
Oh, we only got one sheet.
Two A, three A, four A.
The front sheet.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think one of it, I would suspect 55 is probably the new ones, because that's why it's not.
Well, no, no, the lots were numbered one through, this is parcels.
Oh, parcels.
Yeah, so actually, it's probably, actually, we probably really didn't.
Yeah, we really need the specific lots, not the parcels that you should get. We're going to release three lots, no more than three lots.
So these numbers are the same that I was looking at, which are, don't correspond to the three.
Okay, we got a problem here.
They just don't, I can't find them on the lot.
What's that?
The numbers that are listed on here.
Oh, no, those are parcel, well, but I mean, do you know, Phil, which of the three lots you want?
I do not.
Is, I don't think it's a big problem if we just say three lots and specify the three lots, because I don't think it's really going to make any difference one way or the other.
I mean, are the assessors parcel numbers that are there? Is that why?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why they wouldn't be on that plan.
Yeah, so we would.
We authorize the planner to release lots, whatever the numbers.
Or just say, release three lots.
Release three lots with a contingency, or with a bond amount of $54,000.
Not to be 20, any higher than 20% more than the 45,500, and subject to review by the planner.
I was going to add a second thing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Before this, this is lousy, lousy structure on it, but before that happens, we should get the detailed description from DPW.
Sent to all of us.
Yeah. And you have the right to go back and adjust.
Yes, and, yes, the applicant agrees to allow us to adjust the performance bond.
Greater than 20%, you said?
Well, if it's higher than the thing, they have to increase the amount of the bond, but we, we're, we'll let them go forward with it if it's within 20%, right? We'll release the lots if it's within 20%.
Right, so if the DPW goes over 20% of the 45,000, then they have to come back to us.
They have to come back, yeah.
But we can increase it to any amount. If, if it's not enough, it's not enough. We're not going to let them, you know, under the bond.
So, okay, so motion made, and do you want a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you. It's like a hard truce between our friendly nations.
Okay, this seems to be, more bond and escrow release. Okay, 110 Sutton Street, what's going on there? That's one of our favorite ones.
I believe that the property owners are here. Let me just get my files. And unfortunately, now we don't have our pretty pictures, but I think the pictures are in that packet, if you want to flip it open, if there's anything you want to recall. This one, again, they're, they're looking for their bond release of $2,500. And I did some research, and I think the last time we were in, there, I think I found four different site plans and landscape plans. It's gone through several iterations. Unfortunately, some of these things weren't really dated, so I had a little trouble getting a timeline set, but I learned more each time I found them. And the project, you had an original plan approved in March of 2013.
Parking, that's not supposed to be parking.
And then that plan changed during construction, and at some point, the gravel went in, and the board, I think I wanted to make sure you saw that you had deliberated about the gravel and agreed that the gravel surface would remain, but you still wanted landscaping. And then there were a couple of different plans shown, and some trees have been planted, some things have been moved, and there are.
Here's the problem, you can see it right from the picture here, and I'm not one of the people that's been close to this. There's a parking lot in the front. We didn't approve a parking lot in the front.
In fact, we specifically wanted to prevent a parking lot on this.
And the only thing I can say to that is that the parking lot, if somebody were to park there, their front doors are not accessible from, if a car ever parked there, because of the way they replanted the arborvitae along the stretch of the building, you could not walk from your car to their doorway. So.
We had pictures of cars parked there.
Oh, they're in the packet. I'm aware of that. But now the arborvitae are planted that are obstructing that walkway, so in some ways, that parking is.
Well, but I mean, they have not done, you can come up and speak.
I know, the applicant is here, so.
My patience is about completely gone on this. Is, we have a plan, we said do something, and we don't, it's not done. How can we get the bond release if the work that we asked done is done? It's not.
There's a meeting last year, June, that, what's her name, somebody Carberry appeared, and this is the promises that she, Honors Daughter, I believe. These are the promises that she made was going to be done, and it's not done.
Yeah. The trees were specifically identified, and they're nice trees, and instead, we've got these, the poorest river birches I've ever seen.
And it was supposed to be against the front of the building. It's right there, in the front of the building, and it's not there.
So you're welcome to come up and speak. I mean, we're not picking you out for this, but this was a plan, everybody agreed to the plan, and it's not built. So I, I just don't know how we can, we can release the bond money. I'm sorry, but I just can't say it. I mean, you can get as aggravated as you want, but, you know, you didn't do what you said you were going to do and you promised to do. So we're under no obligation to give you your money back. Sorry. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but that's, in all my years in the planning board, I've never seen anybody unwilling to do what they agreed to do and what was in, in the decision. And it was very clear, so.
I think we've gone above and beyond.
Have you done what was in the plan? And why don't you, if you could come up and speak?
Three azaleas and six arborvitae. That's what's there. You asked for, I think, seven-foot trees. There's four, there's three 14-foot trees there. They're spaced wider apart because they are larger trees. I beg to differ with you as far as screening goes. River birches are fine. And the reason I say this is because they have, they're full at the bottom. They're not just a canopy. So as far as screening purposes go, I think they're much better than an actual tree that would have leaves just at the top. And we space them so that they could grow and fill in. That's what we did.
But you didn't space it.
We leveled the crushstone for drainage purposes. Foundation plantings would not be a good idea there because, just take last winter, for instance, shoveling that roof off, it all ends up there. And that's all for drainage, the crushstone. So may I suggest, if, if the contention or the problem here is, is that you think it's a parking lot, what we need to do is restrict access to that area, and it solves the problem, correct?
It's an eyesore. You know.
It's an eyesore.
It is. You know, you proposed this, which was a beautiful lawn. You have a flat building, which doesn't fit the building style for our bylaws. We wouldn't have probably approved the building with this type of landscaping in front, because the building has a flat panel, and the windows aren't, you know, New England-style windows and stuff like that. We approved the landscaping based on, the buildings based on, partly because the landscaping plan. You came back to us, and your person asked if you could put gravel down. Actually, they said you already put gravel down. It wasn't down yet. We were told it was down, and it wasn't.
The planner said to go ahead with the gravel.
The, we were told that the gravel was already down at that meeting. It wasn't down yet. And then we approved gravel since it was already down. We weren't going to make you rip it out. So that's what we were told. You can go back to the meeting. It's on video. The gravel went in afterwards. Gravel is just as expensive as loom and sod. See, because we weren't saying, you could seed it. It was actually a seed lawn. So that, all that gravel that got added in was just as expensive as this. You chose to do it a different way, and there's no drainage problem with loom. Same type of drainage or thing.
As a matter of fact, the engineer based her opinion on it being loom.
So, and then, so then, but we gave you the modification with the gravel. You can keep the gravel. We didn't say you had to change it. We did say you had to plant these back closer to the facade, not against it. This is your plan that you guys presented. We didn't make you draw this up. You presented this. And all we said is that we wanted the trees in the middle here that would block the parking access. You put them right up on the street. Now, putting them on the street doesn't have the same visual appeal as breaking the facade as if they were set back halfway into that lot, or three-quarters way into the lot. It doesn't break up the facade the same way. When the arborvitae, those little arborvitae were planted along the front row, we said the same thing. We haven't changed what we were saying. We said that we wanted them back against the building to break up this flat wall. And they're not planted on the building. They're planted on the side of the building. So you can just, the simple way is to make a few, you can leave the trees in the front if you want, but put some mounds in, break the, break the gravel back. You don't have to remove it, break it back, throw some loom down, throw some mulch mounds, and put some plantings in the middle that will block parking permanently. That's what we want. We don't want a gate. We don't, it's not visually appealing. I mean, we would never look at somebody put gravel like that in front of a building. We made a concession already, a huge concession.
And it looks like a parking lot because there's a direct entrance to it coming off of the driveway going in on the right side of the building.
It's, yeah, I mean, that's a fire egress, though. I mean, I, but it is contiguous base, yes.
Okay, I mean, you can have small plantings there that would still allow a fire truck to come in.
Yeah.
I understand, yeah. Now, there was a letter that someone wrote to the employees. It was in the package that we got last night, where, I think there was a statement in there where, it may have been you who wrote the letter, where you said you'll be still able to park there.
That was his representative.
Oh, okay.
Which we never, because we specifically said you couldn't park there, and he went back and told you something different, so.
It was the architect.
Yeah. And that, that was, you could, if you watch the video, you know that didn't happen, so.
So I guess we really got to move on, but we're just not, at this point, not going to release the bond until.
So what do I do?
Right here.
Just do this. Do this.
In addition to, I've got the trees.
You can leave them if you want, but there still has to be trees in the middle.
More trees in the middle. I have a tree in the middle.
No, you have them on the edge of the, edge of the parking lot. You're way out here. That's on the, that's on the edge of the roadway, same place. It's only two feet off of where the, where the arborvitae were, that we said, we're too close to the roadway.
So in the middle, at the end of the building?
This plan. Raised mounds, raised mulch mounds, tree right dead in the middle, blocking any way a vehicle.
At the end of the building.
Yes. This is your entrance side over here. This is the fire egress side. Something big here, blocking that no car can get by with a raised mulch mound, so you're not, so they can't just run.
I think it was also in the front of the building.
Right, and then, yes, now that should, we said that should be about halfway in between spanning that, so I think that's probably about 18, 20 feet wide, so. And then some miscellaneous plantings along here, breaking up the facade, follow back with raised mounds, and just break the gravel back, you know?
Okay.
Okay. 1018 Osgood Street is continued, 640 Grape Pond Road. What's going on?
They can't be here till eight o'clock, is that, 40 Grape Pond Road? They needed to, they couldn't be here till eight o'clock at night, the officers, they work till eight, so they'll be postponed.
So what is this for? Did we even have something, bond money for Rolling Ridge for?
Oh, Rolling Ridge, sorry, 640. I'm sorry, I thought you, the other Grape Pond. This is an older project, Rolling Ridge facility at United Methodist Church. It was a release of escrow. Hold on a second. It's older plans that were not available electronically, I bet. So, and I know Lynn, you'd asked for a bunch of things, and some, these are from 2007 and 2008. This was a facility, you approved a watershed special permit for a driveway to the, I want to say, I don't know if it's a parsonage or a residence on the site of Rolling Ridge. And the project was completed, and I have a decision, the decision was in 2007. There was an insubstantial change reviewed and approved by Kurt Belavance, the Director of Community Development, in 2008, and that was reviewed at the time with the Building Commissioner and Town Engineer. And.
So this is just a house out on the street. It's, I mean, we have, by the way.
The driveway. They modified the driveway.
We have a conservation restriction on most of the property there at Rolling Ridge so that they can't build. But I think it's the house out on the street, and it's just the driveway to that, I think. My recollection is.
Do you, are the plans there?
So I, I think this one, I don't think there's a problem. I, do we have something that says everything is done?
Do you need the letter of certification from the engineer?
That, we don't have a letter from the engineering.
So we need that with the.
Involving the location.
If we see, I'd say.
Quality.
What's that?
We can see it.
Well, I don't know. Has anybody gone out and looked at it to make sure that?
I mean, I went out the other day, like I said, the picture I sent in the packet of the driveway, and I guess I can send these around. That's the.
Yes, I mean, I'm not even sure why we even originally, yeah. Yeah, right, right by the entrance, yeah. I, I think the thing is perfectly fine.
I prefer to you to kind of, if, if you recall what it is you might be holding the remaining bond funds for, that's, we're kind of. bond funds for, that's, we're kind of, Bonnie and I have been going through the bonds folder to see really outstanding bonds that are out there trying to close out some of these accounts and return the bond funds. And this one, it was just one of the ones, we started researching, and we didn't really see why you'd be holding the money, so I defer to your memory.
Can I see the as-built?
Yep, it's, can you pass this over, Peter? Those two? These ones were not electronic, the bigger plans, so... I think the letter, John, that you just read from the Director and the Engineer and Building Inspector reviewing the final as-built is the only proof I see in the files that it's been done and finalized.
So, I think we should be quiet. Does anybody want to make a motion to release the remaining bond for six forty Great Pond Road, Rolling Ridge, for the, related to the special permit?
So, is it six, can I ask a question?
It's six sixty.
Six sixty.
But the original bond was a thousand, so is that, is the six sixty with the interest?
Um...
Six oh eight.
Right? Isn't that what you just read?
It's sixteen oh eight.
Was a thousand, sorry, a thousand was original.
I think, I think we should release the thousand-plus interest.
Interest, it must be interest.
I think so.
This decision was initialled saying a thousand, so if it's six hundred and eight dollars it is...
A thousand, okay, a thousand plus a remaining interest, that's fine. Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. Okay?
It might be different tomorrow, too.
Yeah. Okay, so, does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Is it six sixty or six forty?
Six forty.
It's actually six forty Great Pond Road, but I, the plan is, I think the house might be a six sixty, but six forty is the ownership with the United Methodist Church.
The deed restriction says six sixty.
It says six forty and six sixty have the decision.
So, we'll do six forty on six sixty, so just to be safe.
Will we release the remaining bond and accumulated, and accumulated interest for six forty or six sixty Great Pond Road?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay, moving right along. You said two forty-two Dale Street there?
They just need to wait till eight o'clock if that's all right.
And sixteen hundred Osgood Street, I see. Mr. Leary, are you asking for an extension, a continuance?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dan Leary with Silver Project. We filed for the meeting two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, prior to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We agreed to file an extension because in the next week we'll be up at our one hundred and twenty-day deadline. So, while we await the use arguments from the Zoning Board of Appeals, we just requested the extension.
Okay. We may, given their circumstances, have to do it again. If they don't make a decision within, by the nineteenth, then we'll have to do it again.
Yes, sir.
Yep. So, I think what's in order here is to accept the request for a continuance for the Osgood Plan Approval. The, the request is, is word, I'll just read it because it's really short. "I wish to request a continuance until eight nineteen two thousand and fifteen. Therefore, waive the time restrictions for filing of any and all decisions relative to the Osgood Plan Approval, the Planning Board for the town of North Andover until..." Boy, that reads a little awkwardly, doesn't it? I, to continuance, I think what you mean is for the time for the Planning Board to render a decision, right?
For, we, we described it as the filing?
Uh, waive the time for filing, yeah. I wish to, until, and therefore, and therefore, I wish to request a continuance and therefore waive the time constraints for filing. I think if you add the word "and," do you mind if we do that? It, it reads awkwardly. It says, "I wish to request a continuance until eight nineteen two thousand and five. Therefore, waive the time constraints for filing." I think it's, "And therefore waive, and therefore waive," just doesn't read...
I've just got to, just got to review it. Our, our council drafted that language, so I, excuse me.
It goes back to the plan approval, but they submitted it as what...
No, I, this is perfectly okay. It just, and we'll be perfectly fine with this, but it's just, it's tortured English.
Therefore, it's legal.
Yeah, I guess, if it comes from a lawyer, it must be right, you know? So, I, you know, actually, I think we're okay, but, so, does somebody want to approve the request for the continuance for rendering it?
How will we approve the request for continuance for the Osgood Plan Approval?
Okay. And you have the original, second, okay?
We're going to accept this or approve?
We were going to accept the request for the...
His motion was just approve the request.
The request for, we're going to accept the...
No, the motion was to approve.
Well, it's, it's to request or, and to approve the request for continuance.
Approve the request.
Yeah, approve the request, yeah. So, we have the original, right?
Yes.
The, the original's filed with the town clerk.
Yeah, okay.
The original's filed with the town clerk, and we just, the last meeting, we'd asked for something in writing, and they've been debating their timing strategy of which date to select, so...
Okay.
This, this one will allow, your next meeting is on August, I believe, eighteenth. So, it gives him some...
Well...
You're two meetings, you have two meetings. But he is, he's got to finish with the ZBA in August, eleven, so...
So, okay. So, motion made to accept the request for continuance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Laura made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Our friends in the bill were patiently waiting, enjoying all the fireworks this evening. We should beat you guys a little bit, too. What do you think?
We're just here for discussion.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it won't be too contentious.
Yeah.
I was, I thought I'd just start with a little background on why we came to put that up.
I'm going to try to see if I can bridge that up.
We do a slideshow. Oh, we don't need to see a slideshow.
By the way, I took the parking lot, looks pretty good. I like the parking lot.
Yeah, I think the work on those plazas and the parking lots has really changed the character of that, and our businesses are very happy with it. You've seen Taste Bud's Kitchen, she's had a pretty successful start, and sometimes she has the children out there.
We showed Jamie, she don't have to walk so far.
Yeah, it's worked out great from a sharing standpoint, too, for the East Mill tenants. And what we're, want to talk about tonight is the work we've been doing on growing that lot, not the center lot, the project we had permitted with you guys. We got, I think we finished up, we got in January, it's in wintertime, of our plan to, you know, add, demolish that manufacturing building, add parking through, and open up the site toward the pond. Unfortunately, when we did all that design work, we were proceeding on the assumption that the structure of that building was better than what it was, the manufacturing building. And in fact, the base principle we were, we were acting on is that we didn't want to disturb the culvert, so we're going to leave the foundation in place and work over that. As we dug into the engineering, structural, geotechnical, and so forth, and actually went into the building and did some exploration, it turned out that that foundation was not built as well as, actually, the architect had worked on it twenty years ago, had remembered it, being built to span the culvert, and that in fact, it wasn't going to be able to support fire trucks, you know, construction vehicles driving over it without the risk that that structure might collapse into soils that weren't necessarily that great, and then risk damaging the culvert. So, we've spent the last few months essentially redesigning the whole approach to the center lot. And you can see there, maybe you can go back, okay.
So, this is the initial scheme?
That's what was the initial scheme that we had permitted. So, the approach we took, the culvert basically goes right down the middle of what you see as the gray areas in the parking lot. So, the approach we took was, can we just get away from the culvert, safely pull the structure away from it, and then use that space essentially as green space down the middle of the site, not drive over it, not let even really people walk over it.
Do you want to put parking here? Wow.
You'd have, essentially, what we studied first was what would we have to do to reinforce that structure to be able to park over it? And structural engineering can be pretty brutal, as in, you know, you could probably drive over it, but you didn't want to risk it. So, you basically have to build a new concrete bridge essentially across, you know, start from scratch and rebuild a whole bridge down the culvert. In fact, what they did do at the time, and one of the reasons why we were sort of mistaken, was they built that type of structure on the outside of the building, on both sides, where vehicles were circulating. So, on the edge of the building, where the loop is now, where you drive over it, there is a concrete, essentially reinforced concrete bridge spanning the culvert. At the back of the site, when you're up against where the, where the culvert outlets, again, you have a reinforced concrete structure, and even a little ways under, or right to the edge of the building there in the back. But once you're in the building, they had changed the structure and lightened it up, knowing that they'd only be dealing with people and, you know, lighter manufacturing vehicles and storage in that area. So, once we got inside the building, started looking more closely at that structure, and we were preparing to take it away essentially, that's what we discovered. So, this new plan, in some ways, I think is actually a nicer plan for, for the site. We ended up finding a way without sacrificing parking. The parking, I think actually it went up by three in theory right now.
Yeah, we'll see how many we actually get once it's built. You flip back for a quick second to the other one?
Sure.
I can flip back and forth a little bit here. Just let me know if this gets nauseating.
So, what, what had happened?
You can go back to the new one now, I just, yeah, okay.
In the, in the older plan, essentially, what we're trying to do is create streets along the building edge with a parking lot in the middle.
Yeah.
And instead, what we've gone back to is essentially doing double-loaded parking aisles up against the buildings on each side and leaving the center green space. And there are a couple benefits to that. One is that we're staying away from the culvert, and two is it really simplifies stormwater management for us. So, one of the current concerns that we dealt with last time in permitting and especially with the Conservation Commission is we were dealing with matters of inches and fractions of inches.
No, not inches, fractions, one one-hundredth of an inch.
To make everything work. And, and once we said, well, if we can just take out that structure in the middle, we can really just create everything as you normally would, starting from scratch. So, that's allowed us to handle, you know, almost all the stormwater management right down that, that culvert area in a sway out, and freed us up, you know, around the edges, there are some details that are slightly different, but not much. It's really between the two buildings. So, that's, that's the main gist of what we are going to be coming back to you on in a couple weeks. We'll, we'll have the formal filing ready tomorrow.
Seth, can you flip back one more time? Now, on the left-hand side, yeah, your left still, weren't you going to try to get some patio area and stuff? Are you going to lose that now?
Down here?
Yeah.
Oh, we have had discussions of doing a deck in that zone for a potential restaurant tenant. Right now, that appears to be off the table. It's just in terms of our negotiations with them.
No, it's not. It's still technically feasible.
Technically feasible.
That area hasn't changed much.
Right.
The grates are pretty tight approaching the building, so it's likely we do that, you know, as we've marketed and approached people. The latest person we worked with said, I actually don't want the deck there, they're going to orient a little bit differently, as in orient more toward actually the central parking versus coming in off of High Street. But I think that, that might come into play later, and it'd be right up, sort of, tight to the building, to the left of where you see the roadway now.
We've actually tried to widen the sidewalk there a little bit, where you can see the parking lot on the left wiggles a little bit.
I don't know if you can zoom in. There's a slight reconfiguration of that corner of how you get up into the building.
Trying to zoom in here.
That's a strange spot because the grade is, is drifting down from High Street toward the center, but the building is, is staying up high. And then, we grade back up toward the building in those, those streets and parking areas. So, on that corner, you're sort of taking a stairway back up into the building, and you have a long ramp that follows the other direction in. So, that has changed only slightly, I think, since our last plan.
The parking flow actually looks like it works a little better, doesn't it?
Overall, it's just a lot simpler.
It's simplified, it's one loop, and in some respects, it doesn't have the same character along the buildings that we were thinking of with more drop-off and sort of shared space, but...
Yeah, I mean, you, you do, you get some pluses and minuses, you know, puts and takes here, so...
Can't do much about it.
But we've been able to maintain pretty generous sidewalks along the buildings, though.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that's what struck me particularly on, on this side is that you really get, you know, so you don't have that, you know that phenomenon where parking goes right up like that, that people, no way anybody, I think you give yourself enough buffer there, yeah.
So, yeah, you still do a very bit of deck plaza up there, too. So, that's pretty wide.
Up here? So, this area is...
Yeah, to your left, or, yeah, right there, it says new wood deck.
Oh, that, that's pointing to this area. So, as Dave mentioned, there, there, there actually, the bridges over the culvert outfall are in two, two pieces. There's a, a bridge here, where my cursor is, that's at actually two feet up in the air relative to this bridge because of the way they constructed the building. This is the slab floor of the building today. This is the back accessways, actually above that. In this area, it was constructed such that it could carry vehicular loads, truckloads, eighteen-wheelers go over this fine. This area is not constructed to that strength, and so, rather than fuss with that end of the culvert, we had to find a strategy that was very lightweight, even soil on top of it was going to become a potential problem, is what our structural engineer was saying. So, what we eventually arrived at was essentially that we were going to do a wooden deck up two or three feet up from the, the concrete deck. There'll be a little bit of, of fabric and foam fill to create positive drainage so that it drains properly. But essentially, that'll become a, a large open-air deck that could become an amenity. You know, maybe we'll put some picnic tables there or something in the future, and it's a place for people to, to hang out, and ideally also, you know, have access to the pond and have views to the pond and just sort of as a, as part of the circulation feature. But it's also practical in the sense that it's the most practical thing to do in that structural context without risking the culvert.
That concrete bridge, weren't the side parapet walls pretty ugly? Are you going to be able to clean that up or not? Or is that pot, I don't know if it was one core or...
Yeah, right at the edge of that bridge where it looks out over the outlet, it's essentially a formed concrete.
I don't know how structurally connected, I, I assume it's not that structurally connected to the double Ts. It looks more like Jersey wall to me. We'll confirm that. I mean, I, I, obviously, it's not our preference to keep it like that if we can find a rational way of changing that. That's going to come down to sort of the design of how this plaza actually comes together when we actually start out the construction.
No, I know, I know, because it's going to have views, you know, you wouldn't want to be looking at that if you could possibly change it.
Well, and on that subject, one of the other pieces, we're showing in the plans submitted, what you're getting tomorrow. We have a cooling tower located right here today. Some, that's up on big stilts for reasons we don't really understand. We're considering other alternative locations for it, but we're not quite there yet necessarily. One other spot we've considered is moving it just farther away from the pond and out of the main line of view. So, what we might look at is a plan that would have sort of two, two possible locations for it. Just depends, depends on our ability, the constructability of moving it versus repairing it in place. It's just, we're still working that through.
We think we can handle some of this with screening theoretically or planting around it. If worse comes to worst, but there are a couple of details there that we've worked there. We're hoping we can beautify a little bit. It's, that part of the, the bridge that looks out over the pond is actually a little tricky because the way it angles, there's just enough room for vehicles to get by, so it's not a great pedestrian access, except we don't think vehicles would be going by very often. So, we sort of wanted to feel open. And certainly, there's enough room as you sort of move left there to gather their lookout over the pond.
It's essentially a very tight point there.
Sometimes we catch people fishing there now, or they're hiding behind the building. So I do want to also get into the building we're demolishing.
Yep.
Because some of the other work we did was on how to split that building. And as we were getting into all the details of presenting a new facade to you guys and deciding, you know, what we could have in there and what we need to do for a facade, again, we got into an engineering academic debate, but real life, in that if we do it, we'd have to reinforce the building structurally for seismic based on the amount of work we're doing. We'd have to rebuild the walls under the energy code to occupy it. And we started to get into, as if we were building a new building there, for a building we don't think we want to keep long-term, and sort of a dated manufacturing building. So as we got into that exercise, we figured, you know, if we're pulling everything down, we're pulling half of it down, we'd rather just pull the whole thing down at once and essentially leave a lawn there until we have a plan for a new building that we can come back to and say, this is what we want the building to look like long-term, or this is what we need as part of our master plan to make the site work. So part of the modification we're asking for is to take the rest of the building down essentially. And you can see the little bit darker tan of what we've labeled future development sites.
So before, we were keeping that whole thing?
Yes.
That half of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so the building is about 80,000 square feet in total. We were previously taking on like 45,000 of it.
Yeah.
Leaving about 35,000 square feet.
Isn't that where we had a discussion about what would the facade look like?
Yes.
So that's one way to solve it.
Then we get to improve all the facades.
Yeah, the whole building will be, whatever gets built there again, will hopefully be much prettier than what we have now.
And it will also daylight building 36, which is what's just below it on the plan there, which used to have windows out onto that area. And if we put anything back, we would respect the edges of the existing historic buildings at that time. Although that building, I think, is around the 1970s.
That building is 1970s, plus or minus vintage. But that whole long face has windows, high and low, and those would be exposed again.
So what's your thought on this? Take down the building, build out the parking lot, what's your time period?
Yeah, so one of the reasons we wanted to come in for discussion and get a little jump on this is we're realizing, you know, time is getting away from us as far as the season. So our hope was actually get the buildings down, you know, late August, you know, depending on how we can work through the permitting schedule and lining our contractors up. So the worst of it would be done basically while people are still away on vacation, if we can, and pull it down and do the loud, heavy stuff. And then through the fall, be phasing in the development of the parking lot and the landscaping and those other factors so that by, you know, mid-December, everything's in place before the ground freezes. And that schedule should be easily achievable if all goes well. And since we've done enough due diligence now in our plans and engineering, we're hoping it goes pretty smoothly.
When you take it down, what will be left there until you put up something else?
Yeah, it'll basically be seeded.
Be?
It'll be grass.
There's a grass mix proposed.
Oh, okay, so you're going to have some...
Basically, it'll look like a large lawn.
It's going to be a big, and we're going to grade it so that it drains reasonably well.
Okay, you're not just going to leave the cement.
No, 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 we're going to dig out the foundation. We also, one of the things we wanted to try to do with this was get rid of a lot of the impervious area that we were leaving there, so that, again, it's just easing the strain in all the stormwater management systems. So if we take it down, we pull out the old foundation, we leave soils and grass, you know, that should create a nice environment for just letting the water seep into the ground.
Now, you really don't think you're going to find any of the sewer utility lines for the rest of the buildings underneath there?
Well, you know, I guess you never know. The only thing we've been working with National Grid, trying to figure out whether there's power that runs through that area. We're almost certain there's no gas, water, sewer, because all that appears to come back out of High Street.
You have to cross the culvert, which historically would have been, the culvert was put in in the 70s, 60s.
Are you using logic on where they ran things as well?
There is a certain amount of risk in that we will accept, yeah. But we do have some historic utility plans which have proven to be reasonably accurate. The only question, as Dave mentioned, was there's a notation about an electric line running from the transmission lines, which are, for you guys over here, like the big transmission line going across the back of the site. We've been working with National Grid to determine whether that's really true or not. Even if it is true, we might be able to take power off Water Street and just eliminate that line because that's sort of a crazy way to do it. There's plenty of power on Water Street to service the building along Water Street, which is where that goes, so.
And at the very least, identify where it is so we don't hit it.
Yeah. One of the big perks of this plan, as Dave mentioned, it's much simpler. There's a, just basically, you can think of the middle of the site as a giant swale, right? Also, the whole site is now, can drain because we don't have a slab underneath it. So overall, from a stormwater perspective, it's much better, and that's allowed us to eliminate what we originally had was a storm tech system, which is an underground storage tank for managing water flow. So that's going to hopefully mean fewer holes in the ground, less chances of finding unexpected problems. Always a preference on a site like this.
And when, you said you were going to file in days or...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Your filing is coming in.
So we should see you in two weeks?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Good, great. Thank you, appreciate you coming in and giving us a preview. I think that will help us.
Can I ask you guys a procedural question? We have two projects in town right now, this one and the Brad Street School. Both of them involve demolition and construction. And my question to you on your decisions, it says prior to the issuance of a building permit, do you consider that the demolition as well, that several of these conditions need to be in place for the, prior to the demo, the bond and all this paperwork, or is that for construction?
No, it's for demolitions, yeah. The bond has to be in place, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I want to confirm that so that both projects go forward similarly.
Yeah.
So, and is that acceptable to you guys as well?
No, that makes sense. I mean, in this case, I don't think we'd be pulling a building permit, is there a site grading permit? Obviously, demolition is sort of the key trigger here.
Yeah.
I had another thought. Oh, one question we were just discussing is whether this is an amendment or a modification or whether there's a material difference.
It's a modification to your, I mean, I think, again, you guys in your, you knew in your wisdom here, the board recognizes that the project will be completed in multiple phases and recognizes that a series of building permit applications will be filed. I think the modification to the site plan approval or your downtown approval is the proper filing.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure we use the right words in our cover letter.
Unless you want them to start a new, it's very own site plan.
Yeah, modification.
Just modifications.
We have to step over to the consultant for the stormwater, because that's a major change.
Yep. We've already given her heads up.
Especially with summer vacation times.
Conservation Commission is working alongside with us on this one.
Yep, we'll be there tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. This is, the folks are here from the continued public hearing at 242 Dale Street.
So, can you recap where we were and what we said we were going to do?
I'll give you a quick recap.
I think we had a bunch of questions.
Yeah, I think we didn't, you didn't really open a lot of discussion on this one. They're asking for a watershed special permit to construct an above-ground pool, deck, patio, fencing and removal of a few trees in their yard. The project received the NOI from the Conservation Commission. There were no endangered species habitat. They cleared that. The peer engineer had minimal comments that were emailed to you. They've been addressed by their project engineer. You may want to review discussion of the retaining wall because that was something he asked about in his comments. And your board had given them some approval to take the trees down in the interim if they needed to do that in preparation for the construction of the pool. I gave you a draft decision of a watershed permit, but there's, I'm not familiar with some of the things that you tend to ask for, so I was hoping for some guidance on that before I finalize it.
Put them in. Things that are normally in there?
Yes, all your general conditions are in there, but the special conditions I left blank because I don't know if you have any special concerns. You really didn't deliberate on this the last time, so.
Okay, so let's look at what we have here. The, do you have the...
Yeah, it should be in there.
Okay, do we have from the engineer? Where's the engineer's? That's what...
Yeah, Lisa reviewed it.
So where is her letter?
It's just an email.
It's an email?
Is it in here or anywhere?
Yes, and you will see, it should have a June, there's a June 24th from Lisa and a June 29th from Jack Sullivan. Are they...
Shorts.
If not, I will send them your way here. I have Lisa. Here it is. I don't know if I can save this for you, no, I don't know. This one is the one from Lisa, and then this is Jack's response.
I'm sorry, I read it already.
Okay. Okay. Uh, let's see, okay, I just got this from Lisa, okay. Okay, I looked, I'll read this. Why not? I have looked at this and then just had one question. Are they planning to fill behind the retaining wall and then add stone on top of that? And if so, what is happening along the sides? Without fill, it's not really a retaining wall, is it? It's not so much a stormwater issue. The stone under the deck should adequately compensate for the additional impervious area, but it should be clarified in terms of understanding and assessing overall impacts. With regard to your previous question about a discrepancy impervious, area calculations, I suspect this is because Jack is appropriate on counting the decking as impervious since it has gaps and the stone under. That's really the only thing that changed between the two plans. Other than that, I do not have anything to add. It sounds like Concom is already conditioned that any discharge of the pool water be fully dechlorinated. I'm guessing that they require that any landscaping utilized native species. Hope this helps. Okay, let's see. And then from the engineer, it's, the intent is to create a two-to-four-foot retaining wall at the edge of the proposed pool. The low side of the wall will be excavated slightly to allow the pool base to sit level in this area. On the upper side of the wall, there will be crushed stone placed only at the top of the wall, not above. Some slight transitional grading may be required. We are not planning to fill behind the retaining wall. The wall is needed to support the excavation for the placement of the pool and blah, blah, blah. So you look at this, Lynn? Are you okay with this?
Yeah, the only thing is, we need to make sure is that Lisa mentioned that Concom might, may or may not have been the decision I wanted in ours, that there's no discharge of pool water and...
Jennifer, the Conservation Commission described that one to me.
I understand, but I wanted in ours, too.
Oh, okay.
We don't rely on another board.
Okay.
So that way...
So that's in your, so there's no discharge from the pool or...
Yep, pool water and that all landscaping uses native species. Because we have no control over another board, so if they miss something, if the watershed's ours, it doesn't hurt to have it in two places.
One key thing, we need our decision. And they had it in their plan, but it's not, it should be in the decision, that the filter will be a cartridge-type filter, not allowing, you know, to be...
Backwash.
Backwash.
So, does anybody have any questions on this before we close? I mean, I think we felt that this is a relatively small project, but we wanted to get our consultant to take a look at it, so. But Pete, you don't have any questions? Laura? Dave? Okay, so if that's in mind, then what I would suggest is we close the public hearing? Somebody want to...
We'll be closing the public hearing on 242 Dale Street.
Okay. Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's look at the decision. The, Christine, defining the facts, we try to break them into the two pieces. The first one, we try to have very specific reasons of why we're approving this, and so we really, it's not meant to be a pro forma thing. It's, you know, the fact, like the, certainly the first and the second one, I wouldn't include. The third one, I wouldn't include. But it's, the idea is, why are we doing this? We have discretionary authority here. And why do we think that this is not going to create very much of an impact? And so I think, you know, it really turns on the fact that our engineer reviewed it, it's not going to have an adverse impact. It's minimal disruption, they've taken steps to mitigate it, so on and so forth. We'll put the provision in about the, you know, the, what was the one we just talked about?
Cartridge filters.
Related to cartridge filters and things like that. And also the low-impact fertilizers and so forth. And so you want to, the idea is, you want to say you've taken every step and we've demonstrated it's not going to have an inverse impact on the watershed. So you, I think what you ought to do is just rewrite that section to address the very specific things and then give it to us, and we go from there. So I think we can approve it, but you just have to, like, the last one is, seven is sort of fine, but, you know, we don't want to rely solely on their engineer, we want to rely on our engineer, that has more weight, you know.
Can we ask a question even though we closed the hearing?
Of the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
How are you controlling access for kids to the pool?
You have to have...
There's only going to be one gate. Well, there'll be two. There'll be only one gate that's accessible, really, because there's shrub lines, they're about 30 feet tall that run the whole side, so there's going to be one gate.
What about off of the deck?
Off of the deck.
You can't get on the deck.
You mean, if you're on the deck to get into the pool?
It's raised, right?
It's raised, yeah, yeah.
It'd be a door alarm in the house if you're talking about people coming out of the house into, like, kids leaving the house, there'd be a door alarm and a pool alarm.
No access from the outside to get to the deck into the pool.
No, there's going to be a fence around the whole yard.
Right.
But the door to the house would have an alarm on it.
The only access, the two accesses to the lower deck that will be around the pool would either be to come through the gate in the yard or to come off the deck. And if you came off the deck, the only way to get on the deck would be to come out of
On the doors of the decision, the first part, you want to put watershed special permit, so we know which, yeah, in bold on the top, so we're, when we're looking for these years from now, we know which one of its far.
Yes, we're referring to him as John Sullivan in some places and Jack Sullivan in other places. It is one person we're talking about, right?
Yes, and he's probably formerly John, although he signs things Jack, so...
Yeah, I just, even, just to keep it consistent, maybe?
Yes, no, I think he's John and his engineering certifications.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, how much bond?
I'd do a thousand or so.
Thousand.
This is, I mean, this really is built on this per se. This is Jack or John, whichever one we want to call him, is just going to...
Mr. Sullivan.
There we go, avoid the load confusion. Just going to draw that out very simply.
Some of the language looks different, like, eight is not the regular language we use for time, because we list the date on it. How did, this is different language than we know.
The special permit, you mean, show the...
Yeah, I mean, that's generally what we have, but we definitely, this is, we usually put specific dates in there that it expires. It just feels like, this is...
It's an all-new format.
Yeah, the language looks different. Did you pull it from a different spot or did you pull it from another decision?
You know, we've been cutting and pasting and pulling from different areas of, they're all different, I'm surprised. So whatever, like I said, whatever you see that you'd like to have added, we can add.
Well, I mean, I think what we, like, you can even say it is in this one here that we had the Jack...
Yeah, we had a watershed.
Yeah, we had a watershed one here.
I think we've got taken back.
I looked at three.
I think we took, I think you took the watershed special permit back, so, but, yeah, I'd like to use our standard language where we actually put a date in there that, so it's very clear that you don't have to go back and figure it's two years from when, it's the specific date, and it'll be two years from when we, I think we render the decision.
Anything else?
The two that we talked about, the...
Then the special conditions, there's usually some boilerplate ones that we have that...
They're in the general, I believe. Some of the...
The general conditions.
Right.
There are no general conditions.
Yeah, page three.
The whole thing is, well, here you got, the problem is you got, here is the final specific conditions, and then you have general conditions. If, we're not going to have any...
Well, put the cartridge under special.
The special conditions are going to go in the, the ones you mentioned about the pool.
The pool water, the same language that the Conservation Commission uses, and also the cartridge filter, those will go in special conditions. And the rest of them, I think, were pretty standard permit to permit, the generals. But again, you said, like I said, I think I looked at a couple, and I was trying to cross-reference at least two different permits to get it...
Well, the problem, the problem you've got is you got numbers, like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and then it says prior to release of the performance bond, and it's not numbered.
I know.
And so you got, you got to have consistency in...
Okay, thanks.
So, I mean, that's a cosmetic thing, but, you know, you just need to be parallel on what you're doing.
I don't want to hold them up or, you know, bring us back to the next meeting again, but this is, we need to fix this.
Well, what I would recommend is, we have, remember, we have 15 days to file a decision, so what I would recommend that you make all the changes and send it to us, and then we'll send you back any further edits.
Under B on plans, what, Woburn zip code is 01801?
Is it type?
Yeah.
Which...
Under permit definitions, number one, there's only like 20 number ones. Permit definitions, under general conditions, B plans.
Page 11. And could you, Christine, could we, in favor, find the last watershed special permit that we did prior to this one and send a copy of that to everybody? It just, I use it as an outline for these things to just cross-check them, so it'd just be another sanity check. Okay. Does everybody, somebody like to make a motion?
We approve the watershed special permit for 242 Dale Street as amended.
And subject to receiving an updated copy of this subject...
Yes, subject to receiving an updated copy.
So, I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'm emailing...
So all that was, in not so many words, is we approved your thing, we just have to finalize our conditions.
Two questions.
Sure, go ahead.
I understand it's a 20-day appeal process after this. We still can't go forward with anything.
Yeah, basically, well, it's, yeah, you can't, I mean, there's...
You can't, but you can.
You take the risk that your day was going to fill the decision.
Right.
But there's certain things, if you need a building permit, you're not going to get a building permit. But some of the site things you could do at your own risk prior to that, so, but any substantive things like digging the pool, you probably shouldn't do.
So if we were to just hold off until all this is done, what are we looking at roughly?
Well, you're talking, it'll be a few days for us to file the decision, and then 20 days for it to clear, and then you could get your building permit after that.
So if I'm thinking like the first week of August, I'm probably...
Something like that, yeah.
Close?
Yeah, give her, yeah, give her, take it down.
But there's something that has to be filed with the registry of deeds, is that correct?
Uh, but that's all, you don't have to worry about that. I mean, it's part of your building permit and so forth, so...
Decision and I believe Conservation Commission, both paper work. You'll want to make one trip to the date.
Right. I haven't gotten theirs yet. I thought they were going to mail it to me.
You'll need to, like I said, ultimately, you'll need to report this one, so save yourself and just do one trip with both forms. Yep.
And my other question would be releasing the remainder of the escrow money that we put in for, we put escrow, money in escrow to cover the cost of the, of the consultant's fees.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, the, yeah, the point of...
I thought I talked about...
And you could even, you know, because we're going to ask for a bond of $1,000, you could roll it into that, so, and then when work's done, we just give you your money back.
Okay.
And at least you can start lining up the contractor, the dates, to allow yourself a little extra time, because things always take longer, but they should.
Sounds good.
Thank you, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what else we got here?
On the general discussion, you're, I assume you've all been approved by the selectmen on the June 20th meeting. Your terms were extended, so I have a piece of paper here that goes to the North Essex District Registry of Deeds that I would like you each to sign. It gives me the authority to sign plans on your behalf unless you'd prefer to sign them after each meeting on your own accord. That's up to your board, but...
I think, I wouldn't mind holding off for a couple more meetings and stuff.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, in the old days, I remember we used to take the milars out and sign with a special pen and so forth, so we could hold off on that, so...
Well, I've been sworn in again, so to say.
Well, so do I, but I've never done it.
I got a dim day.
I've never been sworn in.
No?
No.
You haven't gone and signed the book?
I think I did once.
And Peter's a full member now.
That just invalidates everything, this decision.
Oh, you're a important personage.
It's very exciting.
Oh.
My had a picture on it. Did your letter, I'd have a picture.
Of whom?
I don't know, the town, huh?
No. I, well, I didn't notice.
I think that...
Starting a new trend.
A new trend, yeah. I was so delighted to get the letter, so...
That's the fire department.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
There you go.
There you go.
So what about water quality research?
At the last meeting...
Ah, yes.
That's Pete's favorite topic.
Yes, it is. I've been waiting for this all week.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, like I said, I was waiting for the meeting to begin, and I had picked up your water quality report by the clerk's office. So you mentioned interest in that, and I spent some time the other day, have you, are you familiar with your water treatment plant page on the website?
Yes.
There's a lot of, good information there, but when you look into it, then there's some things that are missing. You have your annual water quality reports. It's, you know, some, there's some there, not all. So I did, I read through them, but I just, I wanted to check in with you to see if you were familiar with what's on the website. And if you had questions over time in water quality from your water treatment plant, because obviously you've done a lot of work protecting the watershed, and they're treating it, and they're reporting back, no problems. So I didn't know if you had more specific questions based on what's out there.
It is. And the thing we had discussed earlier was, I think we have a very good record on the website and elsewhere of post-treatment testing. And I think we're very good there. The notion that we had discussed was, what is the, not a single test, but what's the record over the last two or three decades? The record of pre-treatment quality of the lake for the sake of determining trends? Is all this effort watershed-related not with respect to the treated water, because the water's going to be treated to whatever level it needs to get to? So what's the trend of the health of the lake from pre-treatment testing?
Have we improved, have we been gone now?
Exactly, that's all. It's feedback, it's feedback. And so I think what we had talked about was, you know, possibly having DPW coming in and saying, hey, here's our record, here's the graphs, here's what it looks like.
Do they currently get a pre-treatment measure?
Well, I know that they, they have a boat, and they go out, they go out and take measurements in the lake on a regular basis, and they have a lab.
And have they done that for three decades?
That I don't know, but asking this question is part of the way to answer that.
It's actually a good question, because, yeah, you have to have a baseline, you have to start someplace.
Not only that, but you could put that in the paper. That would be interesting news, favorable or unfavorable.
Really? Who's going to think it's just...
Hey, I get the eagle tribute, stuff they put in there.
Which, you see Bruce very often?
I wanted to make sure I knew what you would like to ask him before I asked to sit down with him. So I'm glad to hear Peter say he wants to learn more about your, their water information coming in before it's treated. I know they measure for spikes in certain, certain categories. You'll see those on your treatment reports. And obviously, when it goes out the door, it goes out clean and drinkable. They know where there's spikes in the system on the water coming in. So if those are specific questions you want me to ask Bruce or have him prepare to come meet with you?
Well, it might not be a bad idea for him to come in, you know, and because...
At some point.
You know, I think it's, if you think about, there's a direct nexus with what we're doing, is the whole idea of what we're doing is to protect the lake, so if, it would help us, because, you know, if, if, if it's bad coming from a certain point, that's good to know, and we can reflect to see if we approved anything right near there, so...
So I think the question is for him to come and give us the long-term trend of pre-treatment testing.
Yeah.
What's the record?
And I'm interested to see if they can pinpoint an area, you know, because that's really the important thing.
Exactly. The testing, at least as I understand it, back when this was first started, was intended to be in multiple locations.
Yeah.
And, you know, Bruce offered for me to go to the water plant, and I did, met with Julie, I guess last month, and they were explaining that they still go out on a regular basis and test in multiple locations. So there should be, I'm assuming, a record over a long period of time.
Yeah.
You know, we had that garbage truck go in the lake, Lynn's...
I still think they need a watershed special permit to drive a garbage truck into the lake.
No, I mean, you know, we talked about, how do you get publicity in the fact that this is our drinking water, people got to be aware of it? And I think, once we get those, is to bring in the eagle tribute. We used to have a guy actually show up at our meetings until they cut staff again.
Well, one thing is, we have to, I want to carry on the agenda until it's done. I want to carry that watershed notification. Let's have that on the agenda until we get that done.
Okay.
So if we have to look at it every two weeks...
This is the postcard.
Whatever we, whatever we finish, yes, whether it's postcut or pamphlet, whatever type of distribution we're going to do, we can figure that out. Let's carry that until it's done.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And what else?
Working group trails?
Trails. Tomorrow, several, a few of us are going to have a meeting. We're going to try and kick off a working group of mostly staff, actually town staff, to begin to look at implementing the trails project. It's been CPA-funded, as you know, probably a year, over a year and a half ago. It begins at the Mills, and it goes towards the Stevens Pond. And there was 176,000 set aside in CPA funding, and it's kind of been sitting for about a year and a half.
Well, it's, yeah, because Judy was the one that was the champion of that.
So we're going to pick it up, and Peter's...
You want to, oh, you're going to...
Peter's been invited to attend the working group if he wants to follow.
Or do you have an interest? I mean, I would invite Terry Holland, too.
Terry, some people, we've worked with some of the, is that, is Terry?
Stodgy.
Terry's is Stodgy's.
Yeah, Stodgy.
Edward Jones now. Was he involved beforehand?
Edward Jones now.
What's that? Terry Holland?
Yeah, do we have that name? Oh, he's still on Stodgy's, been working over at Edward Jones.
Oh. Well, good for him. But at any rate, the, here, my big thing on this one is, it's a great idea, but if you followed everything that, in terms of the cost, you would, you would, you would spend tons of money on stuff that didn't need to be done, and I don't want to spend the money on some of this, this crazy stuff about measuring wetlands that are 14 feet off the edge so you can get a quarter or an inch closer. It's, two-thirds of the money could be wasted that way, so, you know, we could do it for a lot cheaper than what was budgeted, so...
Some projects have, have been very expensive in certain communities, and some have been low budget, no budget. So hopefully yours...
Well, that's, that's the point. We have, when we've over-engineered things, we've spent more money than we should, and I don't want to over-engineer this. That's my only, my only point, so, okay.
So we're just starting. That's a working group meeting. I think we'll probably have a more PR-based kickoff when we get some things in order.
Yeah.
Another question I had on my discussion before we get to minutes, because we had a little bit of a technological glitch in getting some of the meeting packets out, and I'm going to ask, can we use, will you be willing to use Dropbox as a communication tool? It organizes the files better when I send them prior to your meetings.
We have been using it, so, yes, we are.
I know some of you have used it, I don't know if all of you have used it. The question is if you're willing, you have to go to dropbox.com, install it on your laptop, and then add...
Don't have to install it, you can go to a web-based, too.
A website, but is that, is that acceptable? Because it, it's easier for me to put a whole meeting packet to transfer it all, and that way, all the information's there. It just seems to house the information better and more organized. So I just wanted to check with you before I, see if that's okay.
Does Dropbox keep that stuff so that we can go back to earlier meetings?
Yes.
Well, you have a limited storage with everything, so the town was not paying for an unlimited storage, so you would have to limit it, and a lot of these files get very large, when you talk photos and plans, so...
Right, right.
We were only getting two packages where we did our storage prior when we were using it.
Okay.
So unless they update, then no, would not be unlimited.
But I still, I mean, if that's, again...
You can download a whole folder, though. It's very easy.
Yeah. If it, if it becomes a case where you have a project that might go three, four meetings, you know, some of the stuff would...
I'm just thinking, like, some of the things, like, we had to go back into, you know, 2013, and some of us had those files and some didn't.
Right, right. But it just seems more organized in coordinating them, because I think the way we sent the email attachments, it wasn't working as smoothly. So if that works out, then we're going to give that a try.
Okay. Can we download the entire Dropbox at once?
Yes. It's actually pretty quick, and I'm not tech savvy, so...
I think the biggest thing is we need to have, we have to go through some procedural stuff and say, what do we want? I mean, if, if we were asking to release a bond, I don't want to release the bond until I have a copy of the decision.
Right.
And the plan, and the certification, to all the pieces. We've been releasing bonds where the work wasn't done, fact. And we went through three town planners in a short period of time, and there's a lot of stuff that got released. There's recommendations tonight that were made to release bonds where some of the stuff wasn't done, or, you know, so I don't want that to happen. We go through all this work of doing the work, and then we release the bond, we're done. They're never coming back. You know?
Yeah. We've had some...
I'm still not clear on how requesting documents, it doesn't make sense to copy everyone so we all know what's going on in the communication, not discussing it, but saying, you know, I want to see prior. I don't think that violates open meeting law.
It does not violate.
And I think it'll save time and energy, because I think stuff was duplicated this week that probably didn't have to be duplicated.
It was. Lynn asked for some things, and like I said, I think it was, I was trying to make sure that I got it back out, and then some things that she was asking for, I couldn't find electronically, so...
But the whole thing is, you know, if you can't find it electronically, if you're approving a decision, you're making a recommendation to release a bond, you would have already had the plan pulled out.
Yeah, paper, the big one.
Scan it. Simple as that.
Do we have, do you have the capability of scanning those big plans?
Yes.
In our town office?
I believe, well, it was upstairs in the old school building. Did they take that?
Not in, not in Lucet? You can't scan?
I thought there was, I thought they had a big machine.
They had the big machine.
Yeah. I would think so. It'd be kind of crazy.
So some, some stuff was, like I said, I found a couple that were old today, but...
But see, that's the thing, you should have already had it out. You, you can't make a recommendation to release a bond without looking at the decision and going through every checkpoint. So that's what I mean, it shouldn't be founded if you already made those recommendations prior to, so you weren't looking at the decision thoroughly, because you didn't have it out. prior to, so you weren't looking at the decision thoroughly, because you didn't have it out. That's my point. If you didn't have the plan and the decision, you can't make a recommendation. You know, when it's 10 bullet points, you got to read every 10 bullet points and then pull out the matching plans to say, was this matching up to the plan? I mean, some, you know, that's what I went through and looked at it, but I still didn't have all the documents, so that's why it ends up being time-consuming for us.
It's the as-built, you really need to compare against...
Well, you need the initial plan and the as-built. The as-built, just because someone's, an as-built doesn't mean it matches. That's what people are trying to say. An as-built is what was built. It, the engineer's letter says it matches what was planned, because, yeah, they didn't put it on the plan, so, because, because with the 110 Southern Street, they did submit as-bills and we didn't release the bond because what was built didn't match what was on the plan.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the difference between the as-bills and the plans, so we do need gold cards, you know, if there's a discrepancy.
No, obviously, it's an immaterial difference, we're going to pass on that, but you're right, if it's any kind of material difference.
The whole point is that everybody's definition of immaterial has been going different, I think, along the way, over the years. I think we're getting wider and wider, what we consider material, what the other people might consider material, so, until we get the groove of things, I think we should take back, make sure we're making sure it's material and immaterial.
Okay, I think we're on the minutes.
On line 12, it should be a certification letter in interim as-built plan of the roadway. On line 37, did we get the DPW letter?
Oh, yes, I did. I had notes for you on follow-up from my previous meetings. On, I have a letter from Jean Willis in the files for Fountain Drive for the Housing Authority and...
So can you send that out to us when you get, with the package?
Yes, yes. And on 112 Osgood Street, we have an approved letter from the building inspector in the files stating that there wasn't a change of use for the pizza to bakery shop, so that's also in the files.
Okay, but can we have copies of that?
Yes, you may.
And then on line 97, a change, we promised a buffer to the dumpster, we promised a buffer to the back of the building, change from dumpster to the back of the building.
Which line was that, again?
Line 97.
And what did you want it to say, again?
Replace dumpster with back of the building. See, I do read them.
No, I'm duly impressed, I'm duly impressed.
And then line, I like when there's line numbers, line numbers make it, actually, for the draft is awesome. On line 182, I think we can just say that future minutes should be limited, because I don't think we want to say how many pages. I mean, generally, you know, four or five pages, but should be limited. This was much better, a synopsis. That's the line changes I have. You got a number?
Line 185. As, well, I was asking an update on how quality of the lake water is trending rather than the drinking water.
Pre-treated, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. It's good to know two people read the minutes. You guys can check each other to make sure. So Pete, would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, June 16th as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in...